Call them in your order, and please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nine states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The church is called?
Burgess.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Pasco.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
Williams.
Mr. Mayor.
Just here.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we tabled item number seven, D, E, and F. To our thanks to committee.
Your motion, do I hear a second? Second motion fails. Move to item number two, public comment. I'll question the comments as directed to the mayor. Speaker will be dealing three minutes to comment on topics, on agenda items only. Speaker will be allowed one after your speech. Please state your name to the record.
Judy Cass. Mr. Mayor, last week Tuesday, I was here, and a lot of questions were asked, and I really felt that you were sincere in what you had to say. We have three gentlemen sitting over there at that table that are department heads. Their combined years here are over a hundred years, and now they feel threatened. Last week you said that you wanted the ordinances when we questioned them and the urgency of having them put in today. You said you just wanted them on the books in case. We do not have money for all the things that you have planned for this village. Last night, there was a lady here talking about the tax evasion, et cetera, for the bonds, which means our taxes are going to go up. The money in the water fund is very low. It probably means our water rates are going to go up. As a senior and somebody on a fixed income, this village is becoming not worth staying. And I just want to know, after the town hall meeting and last Tuesday's meeting, when you were at both of them, and I said to you then, I have a very uncomfortable feeling about this, we've been through this before with a previous mayor, and it didn't work, and you were against it at that time, but here you are, doing the same thing that he did. You pulled the gun and you pulled the trigger, Mayor. You lied to us. You lied to the trustees and you lied to the villagers. You said this wasn't going to be done at this time. You didn't give us an opportunity to say whether we had anything against it, for it, or anything else. Nobody is saying we don't need an administrator. What they're saying is, we can't afford her.
Thirty seconds left. Do you have anything else you want to say?
You know what? I feel it's cut and dry, just it doesn't matter what they say.
I'm going to respond later, but I'm not responding at this time right here. I'll do anything to do so. So I just want to take a moment.
This message is directed at you and your half a board, or five, six of you. This is directed to you and five, six of your board. The speech was just given, and we don't have money. We, the people out here, I guess some of us say we do. I'd like to know who's in favor of your voting for what's on this agenda, the items that are here. Right now, I'm appalled at this. It was just stated not a minute ago, we don't have money. It was motion to table this into a later time. There was no second. And I have to use a term that I saw. The word is bobbleheads. One person made a motion, not a bobblehead second. You have the floor, Mr. Mayor. That's all I've got to say.
Take the next.
Put the microphone in front of anybody. My name is Jan Clark. I haven't been attending a lot of the meetings. Doesn't do any good. Come up here, we ask a question, and it's very seldom answered, or it's not answered till later on, when the mayor feels like answering it. I'm referring, of course, to the twenty items tonight, number seven, F, the E and F, actually. Is it you, Mayor, that proposed these two positions? That's a question to the mayor. Did you propose these two positions?
You've got three minutes. You have the floor. You can ask whatever you want. Go ahead. Questions or comments?
About what?
There's not a debate here. You have three minutes.
Oh, 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 I didn't know that. All right. I'm curious what these positions are going to be doing, that are being accomplished now, and why this board has the audacity to have people in the community who voted for you to spend money like this. You ought to be ashamed. One person has an idea, oh, yeah, let's do it, because you must know everything, Mr. Mayor. I am sick of it. I am sick and tired of seeing board members, many of them, just go along with anything that is proposed. Bring it up at a committee meeting, let's pass it next time. Sure, we have things to do. There's nothing that I can see that this, these positions or position is going to do that those four gentlemen over there, three gentlemen, and yourself, or Debbie, or Sherri, or what's his name over there, can accomplish now and haven't been doing, haven't been doing it right. They have. You guys haven't, and I don't think the board ought to have either, and I'm tired of it. Thank you for your time. Think with that, you're going to vote it in or vote it out. Make a wise choice.
Any more? Three ready. All right, thank you very much. Move to item number three, reports from the mayor. Start with the reports of officers. First, from the mayor. First of all, I'd like to, Mr. Mohan, I'd like to first present you with a check. We have three utility service partners. This is a line warranties, this agreement that we've had with, for quite a few years. Here's a check for $1,692.32. I'll pass this off to you. All right, move to collector's reports. We have December's, I don't remember if I gave these already, I probably should check, but I'm going to give them anyway, just in case I didn't. Collector's report for the month of December. We've got property taxes of $68,007.25, other taxes of $227,387.18, licenses and permits for $9,430.90, fees and services of $172,832.31, grants of $1,351, transfers of $120,399.52, and miscellaneous of $176,136.49 for total revenues for the month of December of $775,544.65. Collector's report for the month of January 2015. Property taxes of $58,891.21, other taxes of $632.05, licenses and permits $3,264, fees and services of $243,577.22, grants $1,134.63, zero transfers, miscellaneous $48,681.98 for total revenue for the month of January of $592,181.10. Mr. Mohan, please make sure that the board receives that collector's report for the month of December and January. And then, I'm sure the chief might say something about it. I'll remind everyone about the breakfast with the bunny that's happening at the fire station, what, this next Sunday?
Sunday at eight to one.
Sunday at eight to one, so I'll head down the middle, just want to make sure I said something. All right, with that said, we'll move to Judge Kirk. Judge Debbie Wayne.
Mr. Mayor, just one second. Mohan, I had asked you for this yesterday. I was just wondering how it wasn't available then, but it's available today for January.
Did you do it today?
Right. Yeah, you did it this morning? Okay.
Thank you. Judge Kirk, Debbie Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There will be no more meeting next Tuesday because it's the fifth Tuesday of the month. The next scheduled meeting of the mayor and the board of trustees is scheduled for Tuesday, April 21st. However, a special meeting will be called on Tuesday, April 14th, at 7:00 P.M. for student government day. This was the only day that fit with the school district's schedule. Election day is April 7th. Early voting has started at various Cook County locations, including Glenwood Senior Center. You can register to vote and vote at these early voting locations only. Two forms of ID required, one must have your current address. Additional information is available on www.socvillage.org, www.cookcounty.com, and through official Soc Village email alerts. The latest edition of the Soc Talk is also available at www.socvillage.org with files of school board and trustee candidates and more election information. After reading with representatives from the American Cancer Society, I agree to be the liaison for Soc Village. There are many events in the works. First of all, the Relay for Life will take place on May 15th. Volunteers are needed. Start a relay team, join the relay committee, or volunteer the day of the event. The manufacturing jobs workshop will be held here in the boardroom on Thursday, March 26th, at 10:00 A.M. Please pass on this information. Last year's event was very well attended, and they've asked us to host again. Everybody who was supposed to file for the economic interest statement should have gotten an email now to respond to this by May 1st. If you are a person that I contacted that you needed to file an economic interest statement and you did not get an email, it's because they don't have your email address, or it likely, contact me and I will take care of that, or you'll get something in the mail. Before the next meeting on April 4th, we have the Easter egg hunt, and I'm sure trustee Haskin will tell you about what parks and rec. But please don't forget to visit Soc Village Church of God the same day, from 2:00 P.M. to 4:00 P.M. The church has, is working on 15,000 Easter eggs, 10 bikes, and 100 baskets, so please pass the word on and attend that Easter egg event. And finally, I know that it's a long time ago, but I mean, but I just want to remind residents, if there's anything that you need, my office is always open. If I'm not here, leave a message at the front desk. It's very important that we provide the correct information to residents who need it, so please feel free to contact me in the event that you need any information whatsoever. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Move to Attorney Michael Graff.
Thank you. Your report.
We report to trustees and work commissions, Parks and Recs, trustee Pasco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only a couple of things. First, our next meeting will be April 2nd, at 7:00 o'clock at Community Center. While we'll be discussing things to come up for the summer plans, also the Easter egg hunt, which Debbie referred to, will be April 4th, from 12 to 2, at Community Center. We will have Easter eggs for kids, we will have the Easter bunny, we also will have a feature magician, El Bacc, a face painting with the antics of the clowns from the Shriner Club, and refreshments will be served, so, and there will be somebody there taking pictures if you need pictures taken with your children. And that is my report.
Thank you, trustee. Divification committee, it's me. Let's see, our divination committee met on March 18th to discuss two upcoming events, which is the Soc Village Committee Clean Sweep, which will take place on May 16th and May 18th. It will be from 9:00 A.M. to 1:00 P.M. Behind the village halls where we're going to meet. The public buildings and village access roads are the ones that are on our radar and for our anti-hood or cleanup. The committee is looking forward to volunteers to assist in this endeavor, and there will be getting flyers out with more information. Second event is the annual community yard sale, which will take place on June 13th, and that's from 8:00 A.M. to 3:00 P.M., and looking to do it across the street from Do It Best. There's more information that will follow. The committee also approved to purchase the Hootsie Awards for 2015, and the judging will take place in July, and awards will be given out during the month of August. The next meeting is April the 15th, here at the village hall, at 7:00 P.M. Move to C, or the jury committee, trustee Marsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple items. We will have a order to review the third week of next month, and we are still waiting for the collector to give us a go-ahead. We know that all, there's over 500 trust citations on board that have been reviewed and ready to go, but we're waiting for the ordinance, the controller to give us a number we're going to go ahead and test and see what happens. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee. Governmental Relations Committee, trustee Rivers.
No report.
Move to Neighborhood Watch Committee, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind everyone that the Neighborhood Watch, we meet every second Monday of the month at 6:30. We have our pre-meeting until 7:00, and then our 7:00 meeting starts at the fire station at exactly 8:30. We try to wind our meeting up, so as you come a little late, we will be leaving. We have a lot of dialogue to discuss, so I'm encouraging those of you that want to become block club captains, or you may know someone on your block that you think would be a good block club captain, to let them know. Again, we meet every second Monday at 6:30 at the fire station, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Move to Public Relations, Community Outreach Partnership Committees, trustee Williams.
As a reminder, Public Relations Student Government Day, as the village clerk cites it, April 14th, we still need your Student Government Day reports for your kids, and those would be like, or due by this Friday. Please submit them electronically. If you guys have any questions, just let me know. The village clerk will know if you'd like to get those prepared, so the kids do have them for the day of the event. Also, there should be a schedule of participants, the boxes of, if they're not, which are the do you have, to kind of know what we are going to kind of require today. It hasn't changed. It's going to be the exact same as it is all over here, so we can make sure we have your support. If you're not going to be able to make it, you could please let me know, especially if you guys have personnel in your departments that help us, and vehicles in your departments that help us. If you guys didn't let us know, that would be very, it's very hard on our day. Also, we ask that you be at 6:00, or whatever, and anybody who gives a point that night, we ask that you be here at 6:00, so you can make sure that you have time to picture for the meeting. Is that your session schedule for tonight? So we do not have a meeting? You know that a sec session was canceled, we'd like to continue with the meeting, so I will let you know the next time we have a meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. We have five reports to department committees and commissions. Fire Department, 911 Commission, Chief Stocker.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of General, Fire Department, fact day, President, will be this Sunday morning. Price is $5 for the balance. Children, 11, under $4. The time will be from 8:00 to 1:00. And if you want to picture with your children, the Easter bunny, make sure you bring your camera.
Thank you. Move to Police Department, Chief Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report.
Move to Public Works Department, Director Kevin Bower.
My name, Mr. Mayor, no report.
Move to Human Resources Services, Sherry Jazinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to give you an update, there's 200 businesses going in at 21700 Mark Collins Drive. One is Pratt Industries. They'll be taking 150,000 square foot of the building, and the other one is the warehouse specialist. They're taking 156,000 square feet of the building, and the other half is still going to be vacant. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Move to the Finance Secretary, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are a couple things. The final audit report will be available, available pretty soon. The auditors are working on, wrapping up the revised audit schedule. And the next thing is, the test report will be done before the end of the first week in April. That ends my report.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Yes, trustee.
Yeah, Mr. Mohan, when can we, because we've told them we've been getting some numbers in regards to how much you're going to take, or from the department heads, I'm sorry, the departments that you're going to pull money from. Is it possible that we can get those as soon as possible to know how much and where it's going to come from, from each department, to pay for the salary?
I'm still working on the fifth day of authority information, Commissioner, as I think.
All right. Move to Soc Village Homeland Security, Chief, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report.
Move to Human Relations Commission, Commissioner Steve Schumpf.
Yes, we're still looking to fulfill a vacancy of the Human Relations Commission. Please forward your letters of interest to Mayor Hanks detailing your interest. And also, today is a deadline for registration for the diversity dinner, and there's registration forms in the back. Please turn it into Frank Williams or myself today, because like, today's a deadline. And the next meeting of the Human Relations Commission is on Monday, April 6th, at 7:00 A.M. And that is my report.
Any question? Move to Housing Commission, Commissioner, here, hold on.
No report.
Any question? Move to Housing Committee, Chairperson, Rose Langston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our seventh annual Chili Cook Off, which is not a fundraiser, was very successful. Many thanks to all the participants. Our thanks to Flor Haines for the line dance instruction, and the wonderful music entertainment by Morgan Family, Larry Long, Kim, and Richard Bellia. Many thanks to our wonderful volunteers, four employees in the U.S. Bank, Nadine Morgan, Ed Shankle, Chris Turner, and committee members Bob Ketchum, Rose Langston, Floyd Morgan, Dolores Randall, and Beth Sterck, who worked so hard to make it possible. Thank you to our judges, Mayor David Hanks, Sharon Noack, Barb Norman, and Donna from the bank. Nine of our chef, the first place is G.G. Austin, second place Jesse Boswell. We also had George Kowalski, Rose Langston, Jean Long, Liz Morgan, Nadine Morgan. Third place is Shirley Raleigh, and then Chris Turner. Congratulations to all the door prize winners. Our 50/50 raccoon winner was Chris Turner, who graciously donated more than half of the winnings back to the committee. Just a little clarification for an individual not authorized in speak for the senior committee last Wednesday evening. No changes are made without a vote of the committee. All committee sponsored events are with the approval of the committee as a whole. We do not have a subcommittee, as stated. Documents and minutes are provided to each committee member monthly. Senior Center policy since day one prohibits political and religious information and/or discussion. The senior committee is a working committee providing activities and information to all village seniors. A volunteer committee member is not to seek credit for bad bragging rights and be inconsidered of fellow workers by sitting around and leaving early when there is work to be done. We have a very diverse committee and respect our policy as stated in the rental agreement. The three senior, the three village sponsored senior committees are still looking for members, seniors 50 and up. The Sunday Fun Club, Monday Sunshires, Wednesday Leisure Timers. Soc Village Bluegrass provides bluegrass, country, and gospel music every Sunday, except for Easter, from 6:00 to 10:00. Silver Sneaker classes are every Tuesday. They have a 10:00 A.M. class and a second class, a different class, at 11:15. The open senior activity is every second and fourth Friday, from 12:00 to 4:00. The paperback book exchange program continues to be successful. Thank you to our continuous donors and participants. Blood pressure screening will resume Monday, April 6th, from 1:00 to 2:00, in the senior center office for all village resident and employees. That's April 6th, 1:00 to 2:00. The next senior movie, The Best Exotic Marabou of Hotels, is scheduled for Monday, April 13th, 12:30 P.M. at McConaughey Library. Blood pressure screening will precede the movie. The last home township senior community lunch for the season is Spring Flame, featuring Incanitos, on Thursday, April 16th, at Glenwood Golf Club in Glenwood. Tickets are on sale at the township office through April 9th unless they are sold out. They also have other programs, like to the zoo, planetarium, refrigeratorium, botanical garden, they have line dance classes, Wednesday and Friday, cheer exercise, legal assistance, blood pressure screening, art smart driving course, and health insurance, especially questions on Medicare Part D. They're incomparable preparation by appointment, and also low-cost senior wheels. And they do have walkers available at their loan deposit. You need to call the Township Department, 7549-400, extension 244, additional information and our services. The Golden Ages at Jones Memorial Community Center, next meeting is Wednesday, April 15th. Their social hour is at 10:00 A.M. Meeting at 10:30, lunch at 11:30. And these are $5. Lunch is $5. The call for information and our reservation is 708-797-5395. Exercise your right to vote, Tuesday, April 7th. Next senior committee will be on Thursday, April 9th, 5:00 P.M. Thank you. This ends my report.
Thank you. Move on to our sixth consent agenda. Mr. Trustee, 70, I'd like to agree with. Hearing now, Judge Kirk, please call. Motion to approve the consent agenda as is. Got motion second?
Okay.
Got motion second? Judge Kirk, please call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Pasco.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number B, motion to approve the committee meeting minutes for February 17th, 2015. Is your motion to approve?
Abol. Second.
Got motion second? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Judge Kirk, please call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Pasco.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion to approve an ordinance adding sections to Chapter 74 Traffic and Vehicles of the Village Code for the Village of Soc Village, Cookinaw County, Illinois, truck permitting. Is there a motion to approve?
Abol.
Got motion, got motion second? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Judge Kirk, please call.
Burgess.
No.
Gordon.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Pasco.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries. I indeed motion to approve the ordinance creating a position of village manager. Is there a motion to approve?
Abol.
Got motion, got motion second? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Judge Kirk, please call.
Burgess.
No.
Gordon.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Pasco.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries. I indeed motion to approve the ordinance creating a position of village manager. Is there a motion to approve?
Abol.
Got motion, is there a second? Thank you. Got motion second? Any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee?
I still like to make it noted that we have not received the proper funding for this position.
So do not. Any other questions? Trustee, ladies.
I know that this was kind of a quick process, but it was being mentioned by a resident that the department heads feel threatened, and feel harassed, and feel, they're scared for some reason. So I would just like to say that I know this has been on the agenda, I know that was on the agenda last week, and no one has reached out to me. I know that my husband has been reached out to, so I'm just going to say that I would like to know, my new partner, I don't want to know right now, obviously, you all have all been on hold meetings, maybe something you have questions, so if there is a concern, I would like to know any of the department. So if there is a concern, I would like to know if any of the department has reached out to me, reached out to another board member, that they feel that they can reach out to whomever. Because it hasn't been brought to my attention, but it apparently has been brought to the attention of others. So for this is voted out or whatever, I would just like to add a statement that I would like to know if there's an issue.
Money?
Because we do know that in situations in the past, we have, every administration has brought somebody in, and we went out and did a little bit, and there's not a possibility to remove that person as well. We won't know until we know from you guys. If you do feel harassed, if you do feel that this decision was not made in your best interest, or you do feel like you are fearing in any way, it might be a good idea to let your board know. Because if you had that conversation with the mayor, it wasn't bringing to us. And I don't think that anybody else has had any time for justification because that wasn't brought up last night, the second decision, and nobody's heard it up now. So at later date in time, if anybody could contact me, that would be great.
All right, any other questions or comments? Here now, Judge Kirk, please call.
Burgess?
No.
Gordon?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Paskett?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. I indeed motion to approve the ordinance creating a position of Director of Public Safety. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got motion in your second?
Second.
Got motion in your second? Any questions or comments?
Question. Again, Mayor, I still need to see the financials for this position also. It was stated that we were going to move money from departments. I just haven't seen anything in writing, and that's where my concern is at.
All right, and questions or comments? Here now, Judge Kirk, please call.
Burgess?
No.
Gordon?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Paskett?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. IMF motion to approve the appointment of position of village administrator and Director of Public Safety. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got motion in your second?
Second.
Got a second? Any questions or comments? Okay, no, I'm sorry. The individual for this position is J.W. Fairman Jr. We'll take a vote before I say anything else. Got motion in your second? Any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee?
Again, finances. I'm hoping that this board understands that there's nothing in writing, there's nothing that we have tangible that we can say that we have this money for this individual. Only what was put out here today, not just saw in my box today, for the agreement. The agreement wasn't available yesterday, it was just a verbal statement that was made. But I still wanted to know where we're going to get this money from. Individual is not in that question. And I want everyone to understand that. I'm not questioning the individual. The individual's credentials look great. I'm questioning, as we stated before, back when we were at another administration, that we didn't have the money for this position. And that was the reason why this position was held up. So now I'm asking, where did this money come from? And if it is there, I just want to see it in my hand, so I can have something to refer to. Because right now, I A G report states that we owe seven hundred thousand dollars.
All right, any other questions or comments? Here now, Judge Kirk, please call. Will?
Burgess?
No.
Gordon? Myers?
Yes.
Paskett?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Motion carries. If you would, I want you to stand first, J.W. Fairman Jr., our new administrator. I'd like to give a village residents a little bit about J.W. here. His resume speaks a lot, a lot for him. How about I re-vote, please? Because I don't have a re-vote thing, and I'm letting you highlight some stuff. I always think, village attorney, kind of highlight some of his accomplishments, and why he's such a great candidate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's go through this, and perhaps Mr. Fairman's resume can be made available for the residents of the public, if you leave it out in front for everyone to see tomorrow. But standing before you on the board as an individual has over thirty years of extensive experience in administration. He has extensive experience in fiscal growth and cost containment. Some of the examples of his accomplishments. He was noted for unprecedented fiscal achievements while executive manager within the California Correctional System. He produced or was responsible for budget surpluses each year of up to three million dollars. Labor expenses were maintained ten percent below the industry norm during the period that he was the head of that correctional system. He is a pioneer in corrective penal system solution for staffing. He is an expert in expense controls and service provisions. And what he implemented is now followed throughout the United States and all correctional facilities. He had delivered multimillion-dollar budget surpluses as a result of his entrepreneurial management style. He has a strong history of leadership, in strategic planning, change management, finance, and accounting, technology implementation, human resource programs, and operational improvements in efficiency. He was responsible for directing the recruitment onboard an intensive cross-drain of over twelve hundred members of his staff for a startup organization. He managed and operated budgets up to a hundred ninety million dollars. He was the former director of Operation Senior Iraqi Correctional Trainer/Advisor from September 2010 through July of 2012, where he served overseas. He is compliance reviewer. He is a grant writer. He worked for the Necomoto Group, if I'm pronouncing it right, from 2007 to 2010. From 2006 to 2007, he was a superintendent within the Cook County Juvenile Temporary Detention Center, working under the Cook County President, the County Board. He is a former chief bureau of public safety and judicial coordinator, working in that capacity again under the Cook County Board President from 2002 to 2006. During that assignment, he supervised department heads for each agency. He ensured the focus in fiscal tight to specific goals and objectives. He had proposed legislation throughout the state of Illinois. He has proposed legislation which designed and approved county fiscal management and operations. That legislation was eventually passed. He provided leadership for operations, technical, and funding committees in preparation of a hundred thirty-three-page strategic plan while serving with the Cook County Integrated Criminal Justice Information Systems. He's a former chief executive officer, also known as a warden and special consultant from 1997 to 2000 within the California Department of Corrections, primarily out of Sacramento and Coopirin, California. During that time, he maintained an unprecedented fiscal management record for the California Correctional System budget. To be, to hold that position within the Cook County, within the California Correctional System, he had to be authored extensive ban on check. He was approved by the state legislature by a vote of fifty-two to zero. He is also the former executive director from nineteen... Experience in grant writing, experience with individuals with chemical dependence. He's been a consultant in many fields. As far as his education, he has a Bachelor of Arts from Harton Simmons University, which is located in Texas. I also note that he was the captain of the basketball team when he went to school there. And he went on to obtain his Master of Science degree. His master's from Chicago State in 1994. Again, Mayor, I request that I copy his resume. Be made available for all the residents to see. And I think this is the brief summary of what this gentleman's done in the last thirty years.
Thank you very much. Thank you, I'm looking forward to having you on board. And we've got a lot of work, a lot of work ahead of us. But I'd like to thank the board for supporting this disappointment. And Judge Kirk, please make sure that we have a copy of this at the front desk.
Sorry, sir.
Okay, Jerry, thank you very much. All righty. Not right now. All right, and for the record, for the record, I am accepting your resignation. I mean, you're retired, you're retired, sorry. But again, that's for the record. But also for the record, I'd like to thank you for your years of service. Go back quite a few years, when I was a cadet, you were on the force. And I think that you've come a long ways in the last two years. Two and a half years, we've been in that position. So, thank you very much. All right, move to Ms. Linus Thomas, from the Mayor Board Trustee, Sheriff Trustee Williamson. Trustee Myers.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out for my granddaughter and her friend. Most probably dinner, it was good, just a great dinner. And the girls met enough that they will be part of the group that goes to Ireland for admission. Thank you.
Trustee Warren.
Thanks, sir. I just want to let you know on the back table, the Illinois Legislation Black Caucus Foundation, there's an application in the back for the 2015 undergraduate scholarship applications. That's in the back. And to report to the board to let them know, I have got the final draft for the Aqua Express Car Wash. I gave it to the mayor and the village, I'm sorry, the finance director. So they have it in their box right now. And then we'll put that on the agenda for next quarter, we discuss.
Twenty-first, I think it is. Judge Kirk, please make sure it's placed back on the agenda.
That's it, thank you.
Just a quick thank you to all those who helped with the craft show. Flea Market, the event, was a great success. And I want to thank again everybody that participated and everybody that helped with that. And the flyers for the Easter egg hunt will be in the back table. What happened, sitting here, I'll have another table in a few minutes, right after the meeting's over. So everybody wants a copy. Thank you.
Trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. I want to say that I did attend the Montech Cholli Dinner, and it was a great event. The young ladies came over and they spoke with me. They were very enthusiastic about their missionary journey and what they're going to be doing when they go over there. So I wish them well with that. Also, I did also stop by the craft show and purchase some Easter baskets for my grandsons. And everything was reasonably priced. I thought it was a very nice turnout, and they had a lot of good items over there as well. And I also want to say in conclusion that, I want to say, Chief Holivas, it's been a pleasure working with you with Neighborhood Watch. And I thank you for all of the advice that you've given us. And I'm sure that we're going to be, if I can, texting and calling you for some final things that we prepare to wrap up before you submit your letter of oath tonight. And I want to say to our newly appointed village administrator and director of public safety, I want to welcome you to South Village. South Village is a great, is a great village and a great place. I can't wait to, you get a chance, an opportunity to stop our Neighborhood Watch program and meet the block club captains. And I'm hoping that in the near future, we'll be able to have something where we're going to have the residents to come out and to meet you and to greet you. It is also my desire, and I hope that all of the residents show you through their personalities what a great place South Village is. And I want to say that there are a lot of people that are not on the board that live in this village that have a lot of knowledge about the water and other things that go on in the village. So at some time, they're able to stop by and share some of their knowledge and their talents with you as well. You're welcome. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make mention that on April 15th, here at 7:00 PM, you will have a town hall meeting. All welcome. Also, I would like to say to Chief Holivas, it's been a pleasure knowing you for ever since I've been in the village. And it's been a pleasure working with you. It's been a pleasure learning from you. And I wish you well in retirement. Now you get a chance to join the rest of us that are in retirement. You will like it, the water is fine. But I know you will survive a night. Just like to thank you for all the time and service that you put in with South Village and all the efforts and things that you've done for this village. A person like you doesn't come along often, and when you do come, I appreciate it. Also, I'd like to say to the newly appointed village administrator and public service officer, you do have a lot of work cut out for you. I wish you well, sir. Your credentials, if they're half as good, I'm sure that, well, it will be fine here. Only thing I can tell you is, it's a lot of work ahead of you. And I wish you the best, sir. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. I want to respond to some of the stuff, some of the stuff I'm not going to respond to. But I've got a page full of notes here I've taken. Again, there's a lot of misinformation out there. A lot of people, if they're information from online, there's a lot of false information out there, and it's misleading. Now, I think the best thing to do is if you have questions, come talk to the board, come talk to the mayor. I have no problem saying I'm talking to you. We're working on next year's budget. And I know the trustees have been asking about the position. We've been working very hard. Kind of, can you give me an example? You know, they've brought up the aging report of seven hundred thousand dollars. You know, again, it's kind of misleading. Because there's amounts that need to be paid that we've turned into the I E P A to have paid, and that's on there. Whenever you get an invoice, it goes on the aging report. We've got invoices on work that's being done on our wells. And we're waiting for the money to come through. That money will be paid as soon as the I E P A releases the funds. And then I E P A has been very good at releasing the funds for that loan. So, you know, I think, what, twenty-seven thousand dollars for one of those? So you look at seven hundred thousand dollar bill, there's things that's coming off. There's other things that's going to be coming off here shortly, and now the next account's payable. So again, number one, that fluctuates. But we talked about seven hundred thousand dollars. We've had a lot of work done, especially with our I E P A loan. Even though we get the invoice, it still goes to your aging report, even though the funds are coming in to pay for that. The other thing is, you look at that aging report, you know, about a year ago, over a year ago, that aging report was one point five million dollars. Now, under this administration, we worked hard to bring that aging report down. And again, I deal with numbers all the time. That's why I'm in quality. You know, our goal is, we know that when you look at lines, lines go kind of like this. But you won't want to see your line going like this when it has an upward hill. You want to see that line going up and down when it's going down. That's why we've worked very hard bringing this village back. And, you know, I have a goal. Some people would say it's a long-term goal. I like that as a short-term goal. My short-term goal is to get that aging report down. I want to see zero, and I want to see a surplus in there. Now, have we made change over the last two years, which we have? Now, you think about some of the changes coming in here, filling vacancies and executions. We've made those changes. Now, tonight, we saw the retirement of our chief. But he's sitting in that position because of a change that we made when we came on air and we were elected mayor. That was an important change. Am I going to have a loss with his retirement? Yes, I am. Because, you know, I've told everyone, I stick up for him constantly. When it comes to fighting crime, he's done a good job, he does a great job. You look at the instances we had this last year in our village. He brought everyone up to justice under his administration. He has a heritage under his administration as chief. And I stood behind him, and I continue to stand behind him. And I understand people retired. He's had years of service, and I wish him the best to him and his family. But, you know, we brought a chief in, we took some flak on that one. We took a flak on when we brought in a deputy chief to bring order back into and chain command into the department. We took flak on that. But you know what? Change sometimes is hard to swallow, but change is good. The individual who was appointed tonight comes in with a wealth of knowledge that will help us take those next steps moving South Village forward. And I heard someone said that everyone sitting up here can continue doing a job. And you're probably right. We can continue doing a job when we stay right where we're at. And, you know, staying right where we're at is probably okay. But I'm not the type of person that says that is cool, is okay. I'm the type of person that says we need to continue moving forward. And I'm telling you right now, when we first came on board, we said we were going to take baby steps two and a half years ago. We took those baby steps. We will continue taking those baby steps, and this is just another step moving South Village forward. Just another step. Just another step, um, putting someone into a position that, number one, this village was set up to have. This village was set up to have a, a full-time administrator, village manager, with a board and a part-time mayor. So, again, filling those positions, and, and again, putting people that is, that has the expertise, the knowledge, and qualifications to be in those positions, that's what's important. And that's what the board going on tonight.